Okay, good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting of January 4th, 2021. On the agenda, we have public service announcements, moment of silence, town reports, water and sewer, fire department, town administrator, and we have action items, consideration and possible action on a change order for the Public Safety Complex, RTU number one replacement project, consideration and possible action of a request for sewer service at One Old Town Way, Habitat for Humanity Health 226 Cedar Street, consideration and possible action on a community preservation grant agreement with Habitat for Humanity Metro West slash Greater Worcester, Inc., for proposed home at 226 Cedar Street, consideration and possible action on a purchase and sale agreement between the town of Sturbridge and Habitat for Humanity Metro West slash Greater Worcester, Inc., for possible land at 226 Cedar Street, consideration and possible action on the new position of food service coordinator for the Council on Aging, old business under that COVID-19 update, vaccination leave policy, trails in Riverland, new business, call response, approval of minutes, citizen forum, and then the adjournments. Okay. Public service announcements. Mike, do you have any?
No, I don't, Mary. Thank you.
Mary?
I'm just wishing everybody, residents and fellow DOX staff, a happy, healthy New Year, God's blessings, and a safe one, and here to 2021.
Okay, Ian, do you have any?
I have none. Mary took mine.
Yeah, you know, it goes through all of us. Okay. Then can we please have a moment of silence for all those affected by COVID-19, please? Okay, thank you. Okay, next we have department reports, water and sewer. Shane was here.
You want to jump to fire? We can see if we can get him back.
Okay, we'll go back to Shane shortly. Fire department, Chief?
Good evening, Happy New Year. You have five monthly reports for November and December. There were a couple of thank yous that we received from the community as well as a donation that we received and a copy of the thank you letter that I sent out. Couple of things of note that are out in the report, we were just awarded a grant in the amount of $18,853 from the Leary Firefighters Foundation. That money will be used to purchase personal bailout kits for each of the firefighters and the associated training that goes along with those kits. There's no requirement for any matching funds from the town, so as soon as I have more details, I'll forward that to Jeff, but we just notified that we were awarded that amount. The Santa ride this year went off with, I will say without a hitch, it was a little different than last year, but I think it was more streamlined this year in that we didn't have stops throughout the way, which allowed us to get to a few more streets this year than last year. Big debt of gratitude goes out to the firefighters, especially Matt Bono and King Towns for organizing that and setting up the routes and coordinating the parade with the police department and the DPW, so good job to them as well. That's all I have of note. I'm still working on the year end numbers, so I will forward those as soon as I have them posted.
Okay, does anyone have any questions or comments for the chief?
This is Mike. We received a report last week that we had a positive COVID test. Is everybody okay and doing well? I just wanted to make sure all of our firefighters and EMTs are all doing well.
Yes, we currently have two positive cases. I spoke with both individuals today. They're both feeling much better, and now they're just waiting for their quarantine period to end so they can come back to work.
Good.
Did they have symptoms, Chief? Did they have symptoms?
The two of them both had symptoms. One was actually at work when he developed symptoms. We sent him to Harrington to be tested. He tested positive, so we followed the health department's recommendations, sent the rest to the ship home, did contact tracing, and a group of other individuals were tested this afternoon, and we're just waiting on their results. They should be in shortly.
Okay, anyone else?
This is a little off subject, but Chief, I just wanted to say I had several friends, younger friends with younger children that were very happy and excited by the Santa run, so I just wanted to say thank you that residents were really very faithful for that festive event, especially when so many things haven't gone forward in terms of activity, so thank you.
Yeah, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't send out a thank you to Mr. and Mrs. Claus as well, and they really made the whole thing happen for the town, so I really appreciate them volunteering their time and doing that for us.
Okay, anything else, Chief?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Okay, Jeff, did we find Shane?
I texted him. He's still trying to get back in. He lost his internet connection, so I guess we'll just keep going.
Okay. Okay, so we can get to your report.
Okay. My report will brief this meeting. Not a lot of time between meetings. Most of the stuff I worked on on this agenda. Two new things. I did send out the release we received from the owners of the property where the welcome disturbance sign is, and I would ask that we put that under new business so you all can accept that release and we can get that removed. And the second item is the Little League lighting project. They started drilling bases today, so that project's underway, and by spring we'll have lights on the Little League field.
Awesome. That's a long time coming, Jeff. You probably, I mean, you haven't been with the town that long, but I know that the Little League has run its life since my 24-year-old was a Little Leager, so it's very exciting that it's getting done.
Been a while.
All good things take a while.
That's right.
Yep.
And that's all I have.
Any other questions? Any questions from anyone?
I'm sorry, that release would be under old business. It'd be deed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to action items until Shane can get hooked up again.
Shane, are you in yet? Are you back?
Yes, I'm here.
All right, Shane's on.
Oh, okay. Okay, Shane, you up?
I apologize for the way I had some internet issues. I had to hook it up on my phone. I'll start with the operating reports for October and November that I submitted. If there's any questions on those.
Okay, anyone have any question on those? Let me get more questions.
Okay, we just completed a second round of PPOS testing on all the wells in both treatment plants. I spoke to DEP about this, why we had to rerun it after we'd already done it once, and the simple explanation is we took some small hits that were way underneath the MCLs on a couple of the wells. I'm trying to get some more information. It looks like we'll have to do this sampling quarterly, and if it's every quarter on every well, we'll have to budget like $30,000 a year, so I'm working on that, but it looks like this is going to be an ongoing thing, so we're working on that. The Fifth Hill Pump Station, pretty much work is done until the pump station is built, which we expect to be in a couple of months, and then we just have to drop it in place and hook up the electricity and all the data. The new generator is actually in place, it's just not hooked up yet. It's actually a very nice generator. I was very happy with it. We're having some problems, and Butch and I have been working behind the scenes from people we know, people we know on National Grid, just having a hard time with National Grid, getting them to respond to getting us the new electrical service we're going to need up there, and speaking to the contractors who build these pump stations, it seems to be a common occurrence, so I wouldn't be surprised if the pump station's in and the delay ends up being the new electrical service, but we're working on that, and Butch and I will keep updated on that also. The Well 4 report was submitted to DEP. DEP looked it over. Well 4 does not appear to have, at least from our studies, any impact on the Brook. The DEP has sent that report to Fish and Wildlife to get them to sign off on it, and once that happens, then I believe the stream limits on Well 4 will be removed, which will give us that source in the summer months when we need it the most. The only other thing we have, we're just doing regular maintenance in the plant, stuff like that, obviously dealing with the storms as they come in. Besides that, everything else is doing pretty good, and that's all I have for you this evening.
Any questions from the board?
I also know that the rate increase already go into effect for the, it's supposed to be January 1st.
Oh, you mean accepted.
Disaccepted, yes.
Yeah, so when we build for January, it'll go into effect.
All right, and I know other towns are now doing it as well, but just let us know if we end up losing any haulers as a result. I don't think we will.
I still get to both haulers. They understand our situation, and I think we're just going to keep doing the same amount we've been doing right along.
Nice.
Yeah, I do have a question on the report. It's page 14 of the November report. On our sheet, it would be page 98, I believe, and there's a charge for removing and replacing an E1. Is that typical of every time we have to replace, the town replaces an E1, the charges for that to $500?
No, one, the charge varies, two, because people only build if we find it's a pump was abused. Usually that means there's a bunch of grease in the chamber itself, or we just had one that just burnt out three pumps last week with rocks and nails, so if we find it's a pump, you know, failed just due to age or normal failure, there is no bill, but if we get there and the pump's been abused, which, you know, we find quite a bit, then they pay for the chamber to be pumped out, the labor, and the repair of the pump.
Okay, for example, on this particular one that I'm pointing out, the homeowner would have been billed that amount of money?
Correct.
Okay.
Shane, are all the hydrants in working condition?
All except for one. It got taken out by a trailer truck. It's on Shattuck Road. It's not near any residences. There are other hydrants in the area. We are going to repair it. We just haven't gotten to it yet. Besides that, all the other hydrants in town are working.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from the board? Okay, thank you, Shane. Have a good night.
You too. Thank you very much.
Shane, can you stick around for the sewer service request at One Old Town Way, please?
Sure.
Okay, next we have action items. We have consideration and possible action on a change order for the Public Safety Complex, RTU number one replacement project. Jeff, you want to address that?
Yes, Madam Chair. Robin is on the line tonight. She can kind of go over this a little bit better than I can, but we need to do some additional work on that R2, the replacement unit, for some carbon dioxide detectors. So, Robin, you want to jump in?
Happy New Year to all of you as well. This change order for $2,166 is a result of when we replaced the rooftop unit when we had it off of the curb and put the new one on in late November, we discovered that there were no carbon dioxide sensors that are measuring the content of the return air, so the air that's coming out of the building going back to the rooftop unit wasn't being measured for how potent it was, the carbon dioxide, or it. So the proposal is by, and recommended by the commissioning agent as well as the contractor, and I also recommend that we add the CO2 dispenser so that the unit can be more efficient and bring in more as needed, which will also help with COVID fresh air guidelines.
Any questions from the board?
Robin, I don't understand why there would be an increase in carbon dioxide if the room was occupied, you know, the facility was occupied. There may be an increase in carbon monoxide, but carbon dioxide would not, would it really increase in that that would be measurable? Is it a carbon dioxide detector or is it carbon monoxide detector?
This is a carbon dioxide sensor, so everything that we are exhaling is going into the front end, and the carbon dioxide is more of a measure of how occupied a building is as opposed to the carbon monoxide, which is more based on a lot of coming from combustion and appliances and things like that. So we have carbon monoxide detectors in the building. Actually, they just all hit their 10-year expiration and got replaced, and then this is a separate measure for the rooftop unit to calculate how much fresh air to bring in.
So, but what, you know, what emits carbon dioxide that would trigger this unit? People, when they breathe, we breathe out carbon monoxide but not carbon dioxide. I don't understand how that would work. Is that, when people occupy a room, the carbon dioxide in the return air increases? Huh. Okay, it just doesn't, it sounds different. I mean, you know, carbon dioxide is a gas that, you know, we use for, in carbonating beverages and things like that, but I didn't think people, when we breathe, that would increase that, and I don't know of any devices in a building that would increase the carbon dioxide.
Right. I don't, I'm not going to question you, but I did Google a lot, and it says we do exhale carbon dioxide.
Carbon monoxide is poisonous. Carbon dioxide is what we exhale.
Oh, okay.
I just had a question. I know we needed to use that CARES money by the 31st, and you said this would help. We didn't need to use it by the 31st of December?
That's been extended a year.
Oh, awesome. So this, I know it's only 2,000, but Robin, you mentioned that would help with keeping the air clean for COVID purposes, so can we use CARES money for it, for the change order?
We can now since it has been extended. When this was written up, it was expiring on the 30th, so if you want to move it to CARES money, that's fine.
Well, we have it.
We also have project budget remaining for this as well, so it can come from either.
I'd rather save the project's money for something that the CARES Act wouldn't cover in case there's another toll order that it wouldn't cover. It just makes sense to me.
That's fine.
I don't know how the rest of the board feels, I'm just...
No, that sounds fine.
I agree.
There's 18,000 left in the project, so it's only 2,000. Any other questions? Is someone willing to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mary Dowling, that we approve the change order on the Public Safety Complex rooftop unit number one for $2,166 under our contract with New England Mechanical.
Mike, second.
A discussion? Ian, do you vote?
Yes.
And Mike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Okay, thank you, Robin.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have consideration and possible action of a request for sewer service at One Old Town Way. Jeff, you are, Butch, want to take this one?
Butch?
Or Shane?
It's also on Old Town Way. It's the very last house if you come in off Paradise, and there is no sewer system in the neighborhood. It's all septic system, but that particular lot, Butts Lake Road, which has the sewer system for the lake going around at the Big Alum, so he can tie into that. We lucky enough, he's right there at the corner. He'll have to use an E1 pump, which Shane loves, as we all know, but we'll, he can tie into that system.
Any questions from the board?
I think we have our retreat or something. We need to look into if we want to alter our sewer bylaws, because this reminds me of that other case where it wasn't in the neighborhood, and we allowed it to go through the backyard where the rest of the Gilson didn't have it, and I really feel like when I read the bylaw that it's required to go before town meeting when it's going to be, not be a town walk, like that neighborhood doesn't have it, and I don't, I didn't read the bylaw as allowing us to do it piecemeal like that, without going before the town meeting, so I mean, it'll probably get voted in because the other one did as well, and I just think as a matter of policy, we should review our bylaw, because the way I read it, to me, it contemplated going before the town meeting and voting in a neighborhood for septic service like that. So I'm just going to say that.
Butts, the service though, goes around the lake, right?
Yeah, in this particular case, he's not crossing any other property. The line goes right by his property, so he...
But do any other houses on Old Town Way have town services?
No, he's on the corner of Town and Lake Ave. Lake Ave has the services. Town Way doesn't.
If it's a direct rebuttal like that, Mary, they have to rise the salary. The other one was definitely a case going through other property, which I do believe we could look at our bylaws, though. Anyone else? Anybody want to make a motion, or?
This is Mike, and I'll make a motion to approve the request for sewer service at One Old Town Way.
I'll second Mike's motion. Ian?
A discussion? Mary, how do you vote?
I don't have a say.
And Mike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, and I vote yes. Okay. Okay, next we have Habitat for Humanity. Thank you, Butch. Okay, consideration and possible action on a community preservation grant agreement with Habitat for Humanity Metro West slash Greater Worcester, Inc., for proposed home at 226 Cedar Street. Jeff?
Thank you, Madam Chair and board members. This project goes back some like the time, and due to COVID, Habitat had some difficulty coordinating their fundraising efforts. As you know, they're bringing half of the money to the table to build this unit, so now they have their resources in place, they've got their resources lined up so they can move forward with this project. The CPC has allocated $201,000 plus thousand towards the project. We created a grant agreement that would basically stage or, you know, provide some threshold steps for the release of the CPC funds through the project. We're just not going to hand them $201,000. There's an initial funding amount, and then the majority of the funds are released based upon percentage of work complete, very much like a public building project where we receive invoices and architects or project updates with the amount of materials and labor that have been expended, and then we release the funds to pay those expenses, and then at the end of the project, there's a holdback, I think, of roughly $30,000 that will be released once the project is complete and the owner of the property is determined and placed in the home. That's the grant agreement with the town.
Any questions from the board?
The only question I had is, and it's also in the purchase and sale agreement, is that there's two years for Habitat to complete the project. That seems like a long time, but I guess that's already been agreed to.
Well, completing the project means putting a homeowner in the home as well.
Yes. So from the time that the town conveys the property to Habitat, they will have two years to get somebody in the house.
Build, occupy furniture.
A little bit long, that's all. But that's what it is. That's what's been agreed upon.
Is there a motion then?
I'll make a motion to approve the grant agreement with Habitat for Humanity.
Ian, second?
Mike, I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? Mary, how do you vote? Mary, yes. Mike?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Number two on the Habitat, we have consideration and possible action on a purchase and sale agreement between the town of Sturbridge and Habitat for Humanity Metro West slash Greater Worcester, Inc., for possible land at 226 Cedar Street.
This is the actual purchase and sale agreement with Habitat for Humanity. This will transfer the property to Habitat so they can begin the project. The key to this agreement is a deed restriction that requires any occupant or owner to... to, uh, be at the eighty percent of the median income for the area as a, uh, as, as their income limit. And that will be on the property in perpetuity. So this will be in our affordable housing stock and remain in the affordable, in the affordable housing stock for the length of time the project or the property is in place.
Any questions from the board?
How did we come to own the property in the first place?
Say again?
I didn't see that anywhere. How did we come to own this piece of property in the first place?
Uh, the town, I believe, took it at a tax sale. Then we offered out a, we solicited an RFP for an affordable housing unit.
Just curious. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, someone want to make a motion then?
This is Mike, and I'll, uh, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase and sales agreement, uh, with Habitat for Humanity for the, uh, Cedar Street property.
I'll second Mike's motion. Ian?
Any discussion? Mary, how do you vote?
Mary, yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Okay, and I vote yes. Um, next we have a consideration and possible action on a new position of food service coordinator for the council on aging. And Leslie, you're here.
Yes. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you. Do you want to give?
We, we'll give a synopsis. Sure. We're looking to replace the, currently we have Tri Valley that does our, um, lunch program and they also do our Meals on Wheels. We're not looking to replace them for the Meals on Wheels. What we're looking to do is have a in-home, in-house lunch program that we could hire a person through our Formula Grant that could come in and oversee a vendor, which we have not picked yet. That's to be determined. And they will oversee a vendor and provide a, uh, daily lunch at the senior center. Currently, we're doing that with Hearthstone. We've connected with them in town. It was something that we wanted to do through us being shut down. So we have contacted Hearthstone. They agreed to do a lunch program for us. They drop off lunches. Currently, we have probably about a hundred pickup lunches, uh, Tuesdays and Thursdays. And we see that there's a need in the community as well as our seniors. It's something our seniors have asked us to do in the past is to change our, our lunch program. So this is what we're looking and we've done some studying and this is what we came up with.
I think that's...
Any questions? Mary?
Leslie, do you feel like the, not to put Tri Valley, not to push them under the, I don't know, under the bus, but you feel like the quality of the food is going to improve if you have the decision-making on the vendor? Is that one of the reasons you're looking to do this?
Yes. So because we are not a commercial kitchen, we're unable to, um, cook in our kitchen for the Board of Health. So what we have decided, what, what we have found through COVID, um, that the seniors want a better lunch. They want something, our numbers were going down in the past. Through Tri Valley, we would serve probably, um, the best would be ten, ten seniors a day for lunch in-house. So they've always, and I hate to say, they've always complained about the quality of food because by the time it gets, by the time it's brought to the senior center, it's delivered at ten o'clock and it's served at eleven thirty. So it's sitting in a, yeah, so it's sitting in a warmer that whole time. So for us, we wanted to look into, before we reopen, we wanted to have these things in place so we could offer the seniors everything. All, you know, a better, a better service in there. And we found that having Hearthstone, and we know that it needs to go out to bed, and I understand that part, but having Hearthstone, they were serving, they were having lunch pickup, um, three days a week and they were serving probably nine seniors a week, were picking up lunches. We've been doing it since the end of November and on an average, we have, we do it two days a week on Tuesdays and Thursdays. On average, we have forty seniors. With this lunch program, we've been able to, um, touch a lot of other seniors in towns that we weren't able to ever meet or have never come to the senior center. As well as we do some online programs. We do a bingo, um, online twice a month. These people are all being involved with the senior center, which they've never come there before. So they're, they're active. We started up, uh, pen pals and these new seniors are also doing the pen pals. So we're just getting, we're getting more seniors involved with the center. So this will, this will benefit everyone in the long run.
Okay. Mike, do you have a question?
Yeah, I've got a question. Uh, I've, I've got, I've had a lot of really good, uh, feedback on, on, uh, what, what, uh, you've been doing with the food, uh, since COVID. I'm, I'm wondering about post-COVID, when the seniors are back in, in the, uh, senior center. Uh, will this coordinator, food service coordinator be able to keep the prepared foods that we've purchased from the vendor so that, so that the seniors will get nice hot meals, uh? Uh, is that the plan, or, uh?
The plan, yeah. So the plan is, good question, Mike. The plan is to have the vendor, whoever they may be, um, bring, deliver the food hot at eleven o'clock and have our volunteers, the coordinator will oversee this. They'll, um, oversee the volunteers in the kitchen, which Tri Valley does that now with our volunteers at the senior center. Um, and they'll oversee that and they'll serve at eleven thirty. This way the, the food is not sitting there for two hours. It's being served hot. Um, and there's a, there is a demand out there for lunches. We're just not meeting that demand with our food service now.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, thank you for, uh, for, you know, improving that, the situation here because, uh, you know, I, I know that that's been, uh, an issue for, um, for several years, the, the food at the senior center. And, um, it looks like we've got a bright future in that regard anyhow.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else from the board?
A great idea. I have a, I have a quick question of Leslie, because it's related to the food pickup. I had a couple of residents from another, like an adjoining town asking, the, um, Tuesday and Thursday lunches from Hearthstone, I guess, are they five dollars?
Yeah.
Um, I, do you have to be a Spirit resident to take advantage of that? Okay, that's what I thought. I wanted to double check.
Yes. No, no, not at all.
Okay, thank you.
And I also want to put a, and I want to also put a plug out there if possible. We are still doing the non-perishable pickup on Wednesday from ten to eleven, as well as we do deliveries in the afternoon to seniors in town if there's anyone out there that needs any non-perishable item.
And again, you don't need to be a resident of Spirit?
Um, no, no. We haven't really had, a lot of other towns are, they have food pantries in which we have a, what we consider a food closet. So, but yeah, no, no, we've not had anybody taken, you know, we've never turned anyone away.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Anything else? Is someone willing to make a motion then?
Um, Mary, I'll make a motion that we approve a new position entitled Food Service Coordinator for the Council on Aging as presented by, uh, Leslie Wong this evening.
Okay, Mary, do you just want to put the words in there, grant-funded, so it's clear?
Okay, um, to be paid for through grant funding. I'm sorry, is it, is the grant listed somewhere, what it is?
Yes.
Do I need to be more specific in my motion?
No.
Elder Affairs Formula Grant.
This is... This is Mike. Yeah.
Okay, and, and the description as presented, um, under the job description, Food Service Coordinator, uh, by a Formula Grant. I shouldn't let somebody else make the motion.
This is Mike, and I'll second that. If, if, uh,
Any discussion?
If Alex can make sense of it.
How do you vote, Ian?
Yes.
Mary?
Mary, yes.
Mike?
Mike, yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
I agree.
Thanks.
Okay, next we have old business, COVID nineteen update. Jeff?
Uh, thank you. Just a couple of things on this. Um, Harrington Hospital has started to register and administer, uh, the COVID nineteen vaccine to our first responders. They were able to register before the holiday and they've begun to get their first, uh, shots. Um, of course, not all first responders are getting it. People are electing to get it or not get it. Um, understandably so, but, uh, that process has begun. Um, as we talked about earlier, the federal stimulus package that was agreed to back in December did extend, although it didn't provide new dollars for state or municipal governments, it did extend the time period that we had to expend the, the, uh, already authorized funds. We do have roughly three hundred and fifty to three hundred and eighty thousand dollars left in that CARES Act fund, um, pot. And that we have through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one to expend that on the same things that were authorized before. Um, in addition, one of the things that wasn't renewed with the CARES Act fund was the expanded family medical leave, which provided paid leave for, uh, COVID-related items. And I've provided you the KP Law brief on that, so you can review that, um, at your leisure. But if a employee goes out on COVID, uh, right now they'd have to use their sick time. Or, um, if it's a quarantine issue where they're suspected of being in close contact, they can, you know, some employees can work from home and not expend their sick time. Um, but that, the federal leave provisions have expired. We do continue to work with employees that have medical issues and/or family obligations with children who can't go to school or, or childcare. They are still working from home if possible. Um, but that's kind of where we are right now with COVID and leave issues. Um, we've returned to base, uh, town personnel policies on those. Be happy to answer any questions on that?
Um, yeah, this just goes back to something we said about, um, Harrington has started to administer the vaccine for our first responders. Um, I wanted to inquire about cert members. Um, I did have somebody tell to me that, um, cert members are not going to be offered the vaccine. And I, I wanted to know, is that because we don't have enough speak or what? Because, you know, as far as I'm concerned, they are volunteers, but they're emergency response, uh, first responders, um, and I'm wondering what the policy is on them getting the vaccine.
Um, all these are running through the state's, uh, Department of Health. I can inquire with our own health department on the possibility of getting certain team members vaccinated, but those rules are administered at the state level. Uh, but I can find out if and when certain team members would be eligible to, to register for a vaccine.
I would appreciate that, um, because I'd like, you know, I'd like to be able to offer that to our volunteers that have already, you know, stepped up to, to respond to the community with need. So if you can look into it, that would be good.
Sure.
But right now, pursuant to state regulations.
Yeah, the, the entire, the entire process is laid out in steps. Uh, and the local units of government don't decide who gets the vaccine. The state says, you know, right now it's, right now it's first responders in the elderly and nursing homes. And then as those populations get vaccinated, they'll open it up to, um, whoever's next, wastewater employees, DPW employees, uh, so forth and so on. So there's a graduated scale and I can send out the, uh, I can send out the, the schedule. It's part of the governor's reopen.
Well, I read, it's on, it's on that stuff. I also read that, you know, then the phase two is the co, the two comorbidities, morbidities. But I just thought a cert member would fulfill the definition of a first responder. So I'm curious what the state says about, about that.
That's fine. I can find out.
Okay. Anything else on the COVID update? Okay, next we have a, the vaccination leave policy. Jeff, on our last discussion on this, I do believe the board, um, agreed that they are to be, if the person has any reaction, any symptoms, not just the fact that they got the vaccination.
And if you want to tweak that, that's fine. Um, if a, if an employee within forty-eight hours of vaccine can't work due to, uh, you know, uh, side effects from the vaccine, we can... Yeah. We, you can amend it as such. That's fine.
Uh, because our father's job, where it came up, it's for the kids. This way, giving them two days off and forefathers, then, um, very little reaction to people getting the shot, SORON, and, and a few people with fever and stuff. And that's what we were considering, that those people, if they had any reaction and felt ill, it could take a day and it would not be deducted from their sick time. Anything else on the board?
I just had a question. I think that was the compromise, Mary, you're right. Because I had supported having the day off and you said if people don't have a reaction, I think we reached a compromise. Um, but, but, um, my question is, how does the board feel about that day? You know, like if they have a one o'clock appointment to get their vaccine, are they going to have to use that day as sick time? I understand the day after, usually like you start getting those effects, right, other than the SORON usually, I don't know, maybe the next day. That if they didn't have any kind of reaction, that they have to come to work. It's not an automatic day off. But what about the day of their vaccine, where, let's say their appointment is, you know, in the middle of the day, because not everybody's going to be able to get vaccinated at four or five in the afternoon when they're out of work. What does the board feel about the day of the vaccine? I personally want to encourage them to get vaccines, so I wouldn't want to see that day as a sick leave day. I would think that we might be able to create an exception for the day of the vaccine. But I don't know how the board feels.
Well, personally, I wouldn't deduct them for the hour or hour and a half that they're going to be gone to get a shot. I mean, they're pretty efficient, um, giving these shots, even when you go for the testing, it's pretty efficient. So I would not be in favor of giving them the day off. But if they're gone an hour or two, I certainly wouldn't deduct pay for that at all. I don't know how to rest of the board.
Well, I would agree with that.
Okay, so this is just, Jeff, you know what we want then tweaking this. You agree, Mike and Ian?
I agree.
Yeah, I, I agree that if, if somebody's on duty and they have to go get a, you know, get vaccinated, uh, that they should, they shouldn't be de- they're on duty, they shouldn't be deducted from their time. And, uh, if they have a reaction, fever or whatever, then it shouldn't be deducted from their, uh, sick leave. But they, you know, they should, if they're not feeling well, they shouldn't come into work either, you know?
No, no. So do you have wording for that, Jeff? I saw you writing.
I would just, I would write authorize two days of paid leave, one day per receipt of a COVID nineteen vaccination per employee for work period. Which occurs within forty-eight hours of receiving the COVID vaccination in the event of, um, side effects making them, making them unable to work. This leave would not be deducted from an employee's accrued leave.
And also the time period just to get the shot is not deducted as well. Because some of these people are always...
Yeah, we kind of handle that like we do voting, you know, people leave to go vote, you know?
Okay, yes. Okay, so somebody want to make?
Okay, so somebody want to make that motion and just stated?
Wait a minute, if they got a ten o'clock appointment for a vaccine, you know, you get to come back after lunch, right? I mean, who needs to be?
Yeah, okay. I'll make a motion that we adopt the Vaccine Leave Act. I'm sorry, the Vaccination Leave Policy as amended um by Jeff Bridges um this evening.
Do you have a second?
That's Mike. I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary?
Mary, yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, next under old business trails in Riverlands. Jeff, you want to uh address?
Yeah, Brandon Goodwin, the Chair of the Trails Committee is here this evening to talk about their plans for the Riverlands. They got a grant, so they just wanted to review this, review this with the board and kind of make sure everybody's on the same page. I'm gonna make, Brandon.
Can you hear me? Yes. Excellent, okay. Uh, so Jeff, did you, did you share the um, the the map with the board?
Or you want, you want? Do you want to be presenter or do you want me to share the map?
Well, you can share the map. Uh, I think that's, that's why we're just gonna talk through that to give everyone an update and just make sure we're all aligned.
Um, okay, I was, I mean, it's gonna take me a minute to dig it out.
I can put it up if you want. I can share it.
Yeah, let me make you presenter. There you go.
Okay. To you. There we go. Hold on. Got that down. Okay, Jeff, picking up on your screen?
There you go.
Yes.
Harrington.
Perfect. So um, again, happy new year, everybody. Uh, you know, I want to thank the board for the support and we got Tom Campbell on as well. Uh, you know, the Trails Committee decided, decided about twenty twenty one, uh one of the top projects we have in mind is the Riverlands. So this is the Phase One map that was developed by Sinuosity uh for the trails that we'd like to start, you know, in the spring. And if you remember, this is for the flow trails on the property. So these are are trails that are are, you know, for running downhill, running and downhill riding where you, where you flow back and forth into bigger banks and so on. So it's just more of a fluid type of riding as opposed to like a downhill, you know, straight downhill riders of that nature. And so uh this is the first phase that uh Sinuosity uh developed. They spent a couple of days in uh in November on the property uh going through and trying to figure out, you know, how to lay it out and where the best paths were for the first, you know, for us to be able to start the work. And so, you see, they came up with about, you know, seven or eight different short sections. Uh, the intent would be that some of those would turn into longer sections. Uh, so on the left side of the property, you start to get into some, on the map anyways, you get to um, which would be the west side, you start to get into some steeper terrain. So the right side that you see here in front of you, uh it is stuff that's, uh where some of these hills will be used to climb up, uh ride up and get to the top and then you, you know, then use that as a way to get down to the flow trails. And so really, this is the 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 phase that we're gonna go to RFP, uh you know, this winter and try to, you know, get to the point where we're we're building trail, hopefully, you know, by midsummer. And that's the, you know, that's the big picture of it. We have, you know, Phase Two and Phase Three come, you know, come after as needed. You know, hopefully we do a Phase Two and that would give us all the, you know, the four to five miles that we've talked about on the property. But, you know, like I said, this is Phase One. Does that all make sense?
Yeah, Mary. Any, any questions from the board?
Uh, this is Mike. And uh I have a question that are in any of these phases uh going to uh develop the Grand Trunk Trail?
Uh, no. So this, this um, this is focused solely on the um, the flow, the flow trails, okay? Uh, the committee itself, you know, we're working to figure out uh the best way to get through and and continue to work on the Grand Trunk. You know, we've been working with Butch Jackson on um on building the parking lot. So his guys have done some clearing and and that parking lot near the sheds is gonna be uh developed. You know, in the next few weeks, they'll do some more work, work on it until things freeze and then finish up in the spring. And then from there, uh, you know, we're gonna continue to work on the Grand Trunk.
Frank, so what?
None of this has anything to do with the Grand Trunk.
No, this is all specialty trail. So you know, when we go into RFP, it would be um, you know, it's a very narrow trail that you're running downhill on or riding downhill on. And you're hitting a bank, you know, hitting corners and going to a bank and coming around that corner and going, you know, and going, you know, in a different direction. And so uh it's something that we need to have someone who can actually build it correctly do the work. Do you have a comment on that?
Yeah, uh, two things, uh, for a little clarity. Uh, Mike, we've got uh already funding in place as part of the Riverlands parking lot to build uh the first two thousand feet of the Grand Trunk Trail. Um, and that brings us up to a point uh where, you know, we need the guidance of the town, what's happening with the Belanger property or not. So we're kind of in a holding pattern until that issue gets a little further resolved uh to know which way to go with the trail. Uh, the other comment I'd like to add is the proposal you're seeing before you is we do have the grant funding in place for this. And this particular flow trail is actually uh authorized in our recreational trails master plan. The type of trail is the ST one classification. And that uh is a flow trail uh standard. And so that's the standard we'll be using uh in the construction of this trail. So this is all, you know, within the purview of our Trails Master Plan.
I have a question.
With Mary?
Yep, I know there's a lot of um trails, a lot of very colorful trails up on the map. Are you gonna do one trail at a time so users can say use the pink trail while you're working on the green one? Or does it, uh, all the trails gonna kind of be worked on simultaneously? So we, you know, you wait till the end of the whole project before you start using this flow trail?
Yeah, you know, the way that we set it up is uh we would have all of these built as one project and and not give people access until the trails are are completed.
Oh, okay. And when, when did you think the approximately that will be? I know I'm gonna get questions on this, so.
Yeah, no, we're, we're actually trying to, you know, um, Sinuosity, when they went in, they, there was, there's one area that might be a wet run. Other than that, you know, so we're gonna go to Concom to confirm that. Other than that issue, we're gonna try to go to RFP, you know, in, you know, January, February as quickly as we can. And then try to start construction this summer. And since the funding is all in place, it's a matter of making sure we go through the free bids, et cetera.
Nice. And and Tom, as far as the Grand Trunk, did it, weren't you in a boat a month ago telling us to vote? Grant that's going to extend by Westville?
Uh, that's a separate grant we're working on. That's the uh key grant, Transportation Enhancement Act grant that we got back in two thousand and five. And uh right now, that's uh, we just had a, we're in the process of a seventy percent design review stage. Uh, and uh we're just about wrapping that up by the end of this month, uh which will bring the plans to closer to a ninety percent. Uh, and that's the plan will start going forward for permitting before the Conservation Commission and the state um of what have it. So that's on track to also uh hit the streets, uh forbid sometime late spring, early summer uh with construction possibly starting in the fall. So uh we got, we got a couple of nice projects on our plate that look like they're coming to fruition.
That's awesome. And is that part of the Grand Trunk too, what you just spoke about?
Yes, that will continue to the Grand Trunk Trail uh from current terminus at the Ed Calcutt Bridge at Westville and bring it out to the intersection of River and Pacoar Road. Uh, again, and that's that project that, you know, you guys have been kept up the speed with on that also.
So we are working on one aspect of the Grand Trunk, just not the other end where the Belanger property is.
Yeah, actually, we're working on two. We're working on that part at Westville. We're working on uh, you know, shortly on the two thousand, first two thousand feet here of the Riverlands. And as you recall, we just back uh in December completed a feasibility study of how we can root the trail from the intersection of uh River and Pacoar Roads to the Riverlands. And, you know, we, with COVID, we, we haven't sat down uh internally with the department heads to start reviewing uh, you know, that feasibility study and kind of winnowing it through. But uh hopefully, you know, we can get to that in a not-too-distant future.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any, anything else from the board? Gee, thank you, gentlemen. Um, did somebody have a motion to accept the Trails Committee plan and allow them to proceed?
I'll make a motion that we um adopt the Trails Committee plan as presented and allow them to proceed according to their plan in place.
This is Mike. I'll second that motion.
Any, any discussion? Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, thank you, Brandon. Tom?
Yes, thank you all for the support and uh happy new year.
Yes, you too.
Thank you. Happy new year.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have new business?
Well, wait a minute.
In your centers?
If we can do the release for the demo of the sign under old business.
Oh, okay. Do you have a motion on that? Yeah, by email. Anyone get a chance to read it?
Yep. Do you, you want, you're requesting for a motion to accept?
Yes.
I'll make the motion to accept the demolition of the current Sturridge sign.
Okay, do you have a second?
Mary, second.
Any discussion? Mike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Mary?
Mary, yes. And I vote yes.
Thank you.
I had one thing on that. What will become of the sign when we tear it down? Because I know Mary was a big fan of it and I didn't know if maybe she wanted it for her house. Are we gonna keep it? Are we gonna burn it? What are we gonna do with it?
Well, uh.
Let's have a bond.
The DPW was gonna bring it down to the landfill and forever there it will reside. Unless someone does want it, you know.
Put it in a vacant graveyard, Jeff. Someone will take it.
Yeah. Okay, next is the senior center study results. Jeff?
Yes, thank you. This is uh, we gave this to you early so you could have a few weeks to review this. And what we would like to do is on the twenty first, which is your next meeting date, invite the architect in to make the presentation on the report, answer any questions, go over the results and the outcomes. And uh just present it to you. Um, this was one of the study items uh we undertook in the past year. We'd like to meet earlier than your regular start time, maybe five o'clock. That would give you an hour or so to hear the presentation, ask any questions and uh just kind of hear the outcomes and then see what you wanted to do next with the information.
Do you have any comments from the board?
It's a very important project.
Okay, does anybody have any question or any comments about anything else they'd like to go with before you proceed? I think all the information you need is really there. Ian?
I have, I have one question. Do we have an intended usage for the old building if we construct a new building at Cedar Street or wherever else? Is there a plan for that building?
No, there would have to be, that would be a subject of another conversation. Uh, probably a community-wide conversation on what that building could be used for.
I'd just like to see an intended usage before we vacate it so that we don't have a vacant building causing an eyesore like the other one right now.
Yeah, we haven't had a meeting on that, Ian, but I agree with you.
I, I would assume that other people are in the same mindset, yeah.
But we'd have to get input from a lot of people.
Okay.
That's, that's the trouble with um COVID and all the remote uh meetings. It's difficult. Okay, anyone else?
I have a question.
Okay, um, Jeff?
Are we good with the five o'clock to have the presentation on the twenty first? Is everybody okay with that?
I didn't hear any objection. What about you?
Yes, I can be uh five o'clock on the twenty first.
All right.
Gee.
Thank you.
It's gonna be the twenty first, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, we, we tell the only nine people that our meeting changed because of the holiday and um Hong Kong has public hearings listed, so we're meeting on the twenty first. Okay, any new business, Mary?
Um, I just wanted just to think about um the possibility of having our annual retreat. I know that the public house, that small room, would would not be a good idea. But I didn't know how the rest of the board felt um about a different venue, even at the town hall where we usually meet if we're spread out and, you know, we get takeout lunch or um, I just think it's useful for us to be able to have the retreat and go over some of the um, whatever we want to for, in retrospect, in two thousand twenty and moving forward into twenty twenty one, rather than do it remotely. Um, if the space is large enough and we leave our masks on, et cetera.
I know Jeff, Jeff and I had discussed that last week. And we were thinking of a larger room in the public house. However, all their dining rooms and rooms are closed. And we did mention the town hall. It's no one had objection. We're in a mask and Mary, you know, info room for facing. We could, you know, start saying something up there. Mike, would you have any objection?
Uh, I don't have any objection to uh, to uh meeting as long as there's social distancing and uh mask wearing.
Mm-hmm. Ian, what about you?
I, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with whatever we, everybody else is comfortable with.
Mary?
Yep, that's why I raised that. Maybe we can order like a takeout lunch or something. It'd be nice, it'd be nice if there was some involved, you know, but it's, it's not uh because it tends to be.
No butter, not squash, Mary.
That's right.
And I have no problem because I feel we can't have the distance in there and, you know, everybody does need their mask. So Jeff, we could probably move on that. We should do it in February. I'd have to look back at my calendar.
I know the town hall works for me as well. I also know Table Three has that other building now um for smaller function, which is about the size, I would say, of the town hall on the upper floor. I can't, it's, it's right near the, it's right near the barn, but it's off to the right.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't know what they're calling that. It used to have a business in there, but now it's Table Three.
Is it Ebenezer White?
Is that the one that's, if you're right at the cafe behind?
Well, Jeff can check into that, right, Jeff? Well, Jeff can check into that, right, Jeff?
Well, I think, I think Town Hall's gonna work out because you do have to provide access to the public of your meeting. So at Town Hall, we can still use the public teleconference device, so if people wanted to listen or participate or, well, just listen, they have that capability. We probably wouldn't have that at one of the other locations.
Okay.
Because we're not gonna allow the public in the building still, but you do have to provide public access or public accommodation to the, to the meeting.
Has the public invited to that previously?
It's all, it's an open meeting?
No. So.
It has to be a meeting, Ian, but in my 10 years on the Board, nobody really goes to the retreat. They have to be private, but it's a public meeting.
It's just, it is a meeting for us.
But we still must.
Okay, Jeff, you can. Meeting law.
I'll work on a date. It'll be a Saturday.
Yeah, usually Saturday. Maybe 9 o'clock.
7:30.
Whatever.
7:30 tonight, bang it out, bang, bang, bang.
Ah, there's a very. The sun's not up yet. Hey, anyone else have new business? Any其他人?
Yeah. Um, on December 17th, we received an update from, uh, uh, KPUR on a, uh, uh, a suit between, uh, Durocha and the Governor Baker. And, uh, KPUR gave us, uh, the result of that decision, which I, I believe, uh, uh, gave, uh, the Governor the power to do the things he did under COVID-19. Uh, December 17th, uh, we received, uh, 17th, we received, uh, uh, the newsletter, the monthly newsletter from CMRPC for the month of December. Also, on December 17th, uh, received from Senator Goby's office, uh, looked, uh, uh, an email, uh, looking forward to the, uh, next session. And, uh, I believe Senator Goby said that any, uh, bills for the 2021, uh, 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 the next legislative session, 21, 22 legislative session would be, uh, 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 had to be submitted by, uh, January 15th, I, I believe. I don't think the town has any, uh, legislation that would be requesting, but that's what that was, that letter was, email was from. Uh, December 21st, State House News Service, uh, weekly roundup, uh, which we've been getting, uh, every week through the Town Administrator. Uh, December 21st, also a permanent solution with no conditions weather regarding, uh, Pilot Travel Center at, uh, 400 Haynes Street. So, uh, I guess that's a, um, uh, uh, probably some kind of spill that, uh, has been resolved and, uh, and the permanent solution has been approved, uh, I believe by DEP. December 22nd, we received, uh, uh, Nat, National Grid's yearly operational plan with regard to, uh, uh, vegetation strategy along their, uh, their, uh, transmission lines. And, uh, we have a map with that that shows, uh, that they're gonna be, uh, doing some vegetation control uh, on their main power line that goes, uh, north of Guaco Pond and into Brookfield. Uh, the, uh, okay, the next one, on December 22nd, we got an announcement from, uh, temporary revisions to the COVID-19 measures, uh, from the Massachusetts Department of Health, and they, they changed the occupancy of restaurants and all that stuff. Uh, and, uh, so we, we, we're, we've been updated on those changes. Uh, also, on December 22nd, we got a, uh, update on the COVID-19 response from, uh, uh, from Melissa Mackey Olsen, uh, to, uh, with regard to the Senate. Uh, on December 23rd, uh, we've, we got advisory, uh, again, restrictions from the ABC, the Alcohol Beverage Commission, uh, regarding, uh, the occupancy of, uh, establishments that serve alcohol, restricting them to 25% occupancy. On December 23rd, we received a permanent solution statement, uh, for the, the rest stop that, uh, on, on I-84 westbound. Uh, so there's, that, that's another spill that, uh, has been resolved. And, uh, 24th, 2020, we got, uh, from the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission, another update regarding restricting retail licenses to 25% capacity. December 28th, we got, uh, a copy of the State House News Service weekly roundup, uh, regarding, uh, July at Christmas time. On December 29th, we received a notice from the Massachusetts Municipal Association uh, regarding the 2021 annual business meeting. On December 30th, we received, uh, communications from Charter Communications, uh, uh, changing their, their lineup and having, uh, on tier one, there'll be a, a couple new, uh, and then moving channel, a couple channels around, so. And, uh, and I'm sure that's available on, uh, the Charter website.
Okay, anyone?
That's it, that's it for, uh, for our, uh, our correspondence up to December 30th.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Anyone else have any? Okay, next, we have approval of minutes for December 21st, 2020. Any corrections, additions? Say, if they're meant to approve as written?
I'll make the motion to accept the minutes as written.
There's a second?
Mike, I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? And Mary, how do you vote? Didn't hear you.
Uh, I knew to myself, Mary, yes.
Okay, Michael?
Mike, yes.
Ian?
Yes.
And I vote yes. A citizens forum?
Good evening, is there anyone to speak on the citizens forum for the Board of Selectmen? Good evening, is there anyone that wishes to speak at the citizens forum for the Board of Selectmen? There's no one on the line.
Okay, um, I just have to admit, I forgot to read the disclosure at the beginning of the meeting. So I don't think we'll be in trouble for that, and if anybody pointed out the, um, agenda written on that. Also, I just wanted to ask and thank Alex for all the work she did on all the licenses. Alex, have they all been picked up, particularly with the license and common vittuable licenses?
Um, I know that I sent them over to the Building Department and, um, Cindy was going through and, um, like, holding the ones that needed to be held, but as far as I know, um, everything's all set with that.
Okay, thank you, because if they don't have them, they can't be serving them. Jeff, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, there's a couple of items in the packet that the Board members have to sign, the release. The, uh, items for the Habitat for Humanity home, if you can coordinate with Alex to get those signed, that would be appreciated, please.
Do you have a motion to adjourn? I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I second the motion.
Any discussion? Mary, how do you vote?
Mary, yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
The guy votes yes. Okay, you're all on the 21st.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stay safe.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.